I'll call this meeting to order, the Silver Falls School Board, board work session tonight. Um, there's no attendance, Shelley? Thanks. Um, two items on our consent agenda is our motion for approval.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Any of the second at all in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Okay, and I'd like to introduce Nancy Griffin, our new Mark Twain principal. Anything you'd like to say? There's no other principals here, so you don't have to, you're not on the clock.
So let me tell you, I'm just really excited to be here. I've dreamed about moving home for a long time, and middle school principal has been my dream job, and it's just, I'm very excited.
Good, good.
I have a meeting in a couple weeks when I finally moved up here.
Yeah, yeah.
While working, so.
Yeah. Where's home Nancy?
Uh, well, I'm coming from Medford, but I can live in Shaw.
Okay. Well, good, good. Good deal, well, good to have you. Good to have you here. Okay, couple discussion items tonight, food service management vendor. Andy, you wanna?
Yeah, I, uh, I thought it'd be appropriate to give, provide you an opportunity to see if you had any additional questions after the information that Scott shared with you at your regular session earlier this month, and just to highlight a couple of those things, I asked Scott to just share some of the same information again that we're, we're considering, publishing an RFP to, to see whether food service management would be of benefit to our school district, and not just financially, but from a quality standpoint and participation standpoint as well, so I'll, I'll let you take it from there, Scott.
I think one of the things that we've talked about, and we kind of know from some of the data that I shared, the mid-year report is our utilization, which is essentially the sales of lunches and breakfasts are down. Um, we don't have a, an end of the year report completed for, for you yet, but there hasn't been any major changes in the number of gross sales from lunches and breakfasts, and we know that, you know, actuarially commodity prices are going up, so we expect that report to be somewhat in the red this year, at the end of the year. Based on that, one of the things that Andy and I have talked about was utilization of, of, at least looking at an outside management company. What management companies do in terms of food services is they actually utilize existing resources, so they use our machines, our folks, um, our, everything, cash registers, existing contracts when appropriate, to hopefully get more efficiencies built through either economies of scale, better commodity prices, some marketing to increase the utilization of the food, and menu tweaking and those types of things. So in Oregon, there's essentially about two companies that are big enough to handle our, a district our size. Some of the downsides to our district is that we have a lot of outlying schools, and getting, you know, more nutritious food out to those places is, is a bit of a challenge. Those are costs that we're currently absorbing. If we hired an outside management company, they would have to look at that, assess that, do some financial analysis to determine if, if they are able to get, you know, get those costs kind of reined in, figure out different ways of doing that. An RFP essentially asks for those proposals, and there's a pretty extensive process to that, and we've decided not to try and squeeze that in before the start of the school year, so we're gonna go with the start of the school year at a normal-as-is basis, and probably look around October, November for utilization of our RFP, just to see if we can get, at the minimum, some, you know, good ideas as to how to improve our processes, and, you know, see if we can save some money, because I know that one of the goals of the board, and certainly one of my goals, is to keep that food service program revenue neutral as possible.
No, as neutral.
Yeah.
Not as possible.
Yeah. Okay. You're right. So that's, that's kind of where we're at with that. We, uh, we're thinking about trying to do it before September, but with all the things we have going on, it just didn't seem like it was a real prudent idea.
Oh, Scott, is that something that you have to enter in for a full-year contract to be efficient and to get a good handle on that, or is that something you can do for six months and?
Well, there's, there's certainly performance measures and performance targets that, that organizations that would respond to that RFP would have to hit in order for renewal. From my understanding of that, those contracts are year by year, so I, I would say that if we did go in the fall, we'd probably end up having to go, you know, at least a 12-month cycle to allow the, whoever ended up winning the contract, and if we decided to accept that, then too, we, that doesn't necessarily, you know, if they say that we're gonna, it's gonna cost X amount of money, and we know our revenue is, isn't gonna meet that revenue neutral target, we don't have to pull that trigger. But I, I would venture a guess it would be a year at least.
And is there some neighboring school districts that already utilize this service, or is there anything that we can use as a template, or, you know?
Can I chime in here?
Yeah.
Part of the RFP is, is required references, or, or so, and, but, and I'm, I am aware that one of the companies is being used in the Canby School District, St. Okeechobee School District, Woodburn School District, for management purposes, so they're, yeah, they're distinctly around.
Okay.
And I agree, we need to rely upon references before we take a punch like this.
I don't think we're probably unique on, on seeing participation levels dropping.
No, you're right.
A lot of it's tied to the federal requirements, and kids just don't want to eat this stuff, and portion sizes, and those type of things.
It's really a challenge, you're absolutely right.
So I, I think management company is a good way to go, because it's a lot of new rules we have to keep track of, and whatnot. Do you see any job losses associated with this, or is there gonna be?
I don't, we're, we're really hoping to keep that, you know, the job loss, you know, no job losses in this situation. And, um, yeah, I wouldn't suggest that, I, I wouldn't think that there would be, because we are running pretty lean in our food service program right now, so really the management component to that, at least from the initial talks that we've had, has been utilization of.
So you'd be looking, you'd be looking at this to fully pay for itself then on its own?
Yeah, that's the goal.
Scott, are they, are you guys, are you guys currently delivering meals to all the rural schools?
No.
No. No, commodities are delivered to all the schools, and then, and then, as an example, Silver Crest, Scotts Mills, Bucre, many of those are prepared onsite. All of the town schools have meals prepared at the high school, and then are shipped hot out to each of the sites, and then they're placed in warmers out there, and then they prepare some things, Tom, like salads and country.
Right. What I was getting at is what about the ones without kitchens? Like some, you know, Evergreen, Prada, are they, do they have hot meals?
They don't.
Okay.
No.
Brown bag, everyone's, everyone's brown bagging.
Correct. Unless parent group does something. We have three schools that have no, no hot lunch program, Prada, I'm Evergreen, and Central Owl.
Okay. Do they have, do any of these other outfits have any track record of getting, getting the utilization up? Do the kids like it?
Oh, yes, that's, that's kind of where they, they hang their hat, actually.
Okay.
You know, it's a dual, dual approach where through buying power and, and size, they can try and drive the, the commodity cost down, supply cost down, and then marketing really is intended to get that up, you know, the utilization of it's up.
So buying power, if they're buying for a few different districts around, they can buy better quality stuff possibly at a lower price, and I see.
Kind of follow up on Herb's question about timeline, how long, how long's the contract? Is, is the RFP kind of open-ended around that so they can put a proposal forward on what, what they envision the contract length to be? Because if I, if I were bidding on something like this, I'd want a fairly long contract.
Sure.
With some measures along the way, how we're doing, because the longer the contract, the more likely to be successful.
You're right. Um, the, um, the RFP, which we took as a statewide template, we took it off of a state food services template, the RFP is, is for a program length of five years, but those contract length in, in between are one, you know, year to year, based on, you know, ability for us to renew, or, or any of us to kind of cancel out if it doesn't pencil out for them, so it's one year to year for five years.
Okay. Part of the RFP requires a, a pre, a pre-proposal meeting, so they have to visit the district, visit the schools, talk, see, understand the geography, understand the distance between schools, and the RFP would also allow us to, to modify the contract in the first year. Let's say, for instance, we want to pilot it at three schools, or half a dozen schools, or the rural schools only, we, we can do that, though we have that flexibility in this as well. So there's, there's quite a bit of flexibility for us to, to work with here, to see if there's some merit for having it in this district. And again, part of it is just information gathering. I think what Scott has, has discovered is that, is that this information will help us understand, is this really even an affordable option for us to consider, or are we managing as well as we can with what we're doing right now? Because that's, I think, another important distinction to make. We think there's some benefits to it, but we won't know until we see the data.
Do we, are we restricted how many folks we need to get bids back from? Do we need three, three bidders, or whoever?
No, we're utilizing the full contract, the state contracting laws for this, and there's some special carve-outs for food services vendors for educational entities. So when we actually post the RFP, it'll go onto a statewide website that's actually a part of, it's called ORPEN, and it's part of a, kind of a consortium of, of other state governmental agencies, school districts, municipalities, that kind of thing, that, so if we get even one out of there, we've met the legal requirements. We, we only expect actually two contracts coming back. There's about two that are capable of handling a district this size in, in Oregon. That doesn't say that somebody can't come into, into town, you know, kind of, but, but I would venture to say that we'll probably get two bids back.
So this is just the management? Would they?
Just management.
So would they be, generally, would they, would they re-interview our people?
We would actually maintain all the hiring of our people. We don't, we don't transfer any, any jobs over there. It's simply a contract to provide the management oversight.
They're scheduling the meals and the supplies, and, okay.
Yeah. And they are, would be responsible. We would end up paying, paying the bills, but they would be responsible for maintaining the, you know, the proper inventories for foods and beverages and those types of things.
Okay.
Sounds good, Scott.
Yeah, it'll give it a shot. We'll, we'll know more in, in the fall.
Yeah.
So we'll pull back.
So I think there's some good, could be some good benefits to it.
Hope so.
Pencils out. Okay. Draft resolution for November bond election. Andy, do you wanna?
Yes, I, I can address the actual draft resolution, and again, it's in draft form entirely, it is the buff color document in front of you, but before we jump into that, and I think it'll help with, contribute to your discussion, there's a single page in there, it says additional information requested by board members at the top, one page placed in front of you, and a couple of you asked questions at the last meeting, and I was able to obtain this information. First question was, have there been recent City of Silverton tax increases, or what's that impact? I spoke with Bob Willby, city manager, who, who said that the permanent tax rate for the city is, is frozen and hasn't, hasn't changed. He did state that there, the city is in the second year, second year of a five-year operating levy, levy of operation of the city pool, and that, that for the City of Silverton residents equates to 43 cents per thousand of assessed value. That's scheduled to retire in June of 2018. And then, Jason, I never get his last name right, go to Drew, Development Director did confirm that the, the new fees for streets, for parks and stormwater collection were administered in July of 2015. Tom, you asked about the amount of principal and interest paid over the life of the bond, just based upon the last structure that we talked about.
Yeah.
And I placed in, in front of you, a black and white copy of, of the full analysis, and those breakdowns for the, the two levels you were looking, the 22.5 million, the 24.9 million, are on page eight and page 11.
Okay.
Two columns which, which show the principal and the interest, again, these are all estimates.
Yes.
None of this is, is specific until actual sales of the bonds, but that's what's estimated. And I was sharing with, with Wally a little bit earlier too, that, that they're conservative estimates, because keep in mind that variables to put these, these models together are based upon fairly conservative assessed value growth over the seventeen and a half years, and fairly conservative collection rate over the seventeen and a half years of the bond. So, so a person, a person could speculate that, that the figures will be at bay on this, of course.
Something to note, we're gonna be paying an extra four to five million dollars most likely, just to keep the tax rate below $3, so maybe okay, but we need to go in this, our eyes open, that we are spending additional dollars to try and make it, keep it more reliable.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a good point, Wally. The, and I think that, that's, that's as probably the basic of economics as, as a person can, can define, is if you shorten the length of the issue, you naturally have to increase the rate of the issue, and so with that comes an earlier payoff, and with that, of course, comes savings and interest. It's very similar to a home mortgage, or even a simple loan. That's the delicate balance that the six or seven of you have to sort out. And I, I, I'm thinking back to the information we've, we've heard from the public, and, and while I think at least 43% of the public was on board with $3.36 per thousand, which would have been the rate in, in May of 2013, obviously the majority, for some of them, that was too high. And so if your conversation around $3 is something that you think the public would be interested in, then I think you have to struggle with, is it, is it enough to get the voters to say yes, though they're willing to do it, at, with the expense of having some additional interest to pay, because it's gonna be four, five, maybe six years longer than, than what the savings of three, or four, or five million dollars would be. It's an interesting dilemma.
Yep.
So, that's, I also put on the bottom of that page, average assessed value of taxable property lots in, in the district, in Silver Falls District, did some research over the last week, is the average of tax lot is at assessed value of $148,000 per. So clearly, there are some tax lots that are worth $25,000, and there's some that are worth a million dollars, but the average is at $148,000 across the district. Now, now that includes everyone, so we could do some additional drilling down and, you know, remove commercial, or remove multi-family, or include only single family, whatever. And what we did discover, well, I don't have the figures in front of me, and I worked with Jason, would want that at the city on this as well, is that the, the proportion of taxable lots in the City of Silverton is about 48.5% to 51% in the rural area, so close to 50-50 split, very similar to the precinct split that we have, and very similar to the enrollment that we have in our district, it's very, about 50-50 split. So I thought that was an interesting piece of information, too. However, the rural, the rural, the rural tax lots, on average, are slightly higher than the value in the City of Silverton. And who, who knows what that dynamic is? It could be a, a few very large corporate farms, I mean, anything could cause that to go higher, because everything is included with that, but I thought that was an interesting piece of information as well. So the buff color in front of you is a draft resolution. It's crafted by our bond council, with some assistance input by Scott and me, and Seattle Northwest Securities, some of you that have done resolutions in the past for bond elections, well, all of you for that matter, and when we refund, it comes through a resolution of this form. And the first and second page are largely legalese, they do cite, and I use the 24.9 million number, that's what I believe I heard at the last meeting, and with an issue of 20 years or less, so you're not committed to 20 years, it's 20 years or less, so that decision doesn't have to be made when you take action on this document, if you're to take action. So that's the first on the second page, and it authorizes Scott and, and me to submit information to the elections office, of course, and to, to do all of the clerical work specific to processing this, this ballot. The appendix, or excuse me, exhibit A, the last page, is the meat and potatoes of this, and it, it is essentially the information that would be placed in the voter's guide. So you'll see at the top, if you can envision the voter's guide, there's a caption, there's a question, and then a summary of information with a debt service statement at the bottom. And that's the legally required information that we need to submit. So all of this information is placed in front of you for your discussion and input, and of course, over the course of, of the next two weeks, if additional thoughts come to mind, it can be modified up until the time that you approve it. And I know that some of you have some input already, so.
Yeah. For the summary part, you know, I just think it's really important when we're reflecting back on what Slater Street's gonna look like, and what the bond is gonna do there, that we include that we're taking down that front section, and that the demolition is part of that information, because it doesn't happen there.
Fund the demolition and reconstruction of Slater Street would be appropriate.
Yeah, maybe a basic like that.
With the majority of it or something add, you know, something.
And I don't know if you can even state, you know, the brick section, because people are very confused on what's being torn down, what's not being torn down. That, I think it needs to be specific, because this is what they are reading in the voter's pamphlet, and there's still questions, if I didn't know what was going on, that I would go, why are they doing that to Slater? So, and that, and that looks good to me.
I'd like to see some work towards putting the purpose at the front, or at the start of the paragraph or sentences, rather than at the very last sentence. Last sentence is completion of these projects results in discontinued use of Eugene Field School. You've gotta read all the way to the end to figure out what we're doing, and I'd like to see that be the part in center, and then the detail, maybe.
So a reference that last, somehow place that last sentence at the front, if approved, et cetera, and then completion of the following projects would result in the continued use of, something like that, and then cite the two major portions of the project. Okay? Yeah, that, that makes sense.
In order to discontinue these.
Or in order for something.
Cast their attention first.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's really our, obviously, our main purpose is to, to discontinue the use of Eugene Field, and, and this is how we're gonna do it.
Okay.
I had a question about in the first, in our release, or second, whereas here, in the first page it said the joint funding, safety improvements, public and private entities, what, what are, what's our joint funding, and other public and private entities?
Let me, let me find out. I, I asked Anne Sherman whether that ORS was required in this, and she said, for any public projects over capital construction, one million dollar or more, that there needs to be a reference to evaluation of safety improvements. But I didn't ask her about the public and private entity cooperation, whatever that means. Let me find that out.
And then, we don't say, and I assume this is intentional, but we don't, we don't have anywhere in this information, any kind of a breakdown to say that, you know, X number of thousands goes to this project, or this technology security upgrades, and X number of dollars goes towards a reconstruction portion. So I don't know if that's intentional, or if that's something we want to consider, or or not.
I don't even look at it both ways. It might be better to have it more vague, and, but on the other, other hand, we put people on specifics, so.
The, we, we will be putting together a communication plan with a lot of information that'll be breaking this information, this down to nuggets, I think that will be understandable, and we'll get it at, at what you, what you're asking. But I, but I think there, there are enough people, though, who, similar to what Julie just said, they just read the voter's guide, and that's their information. So why don't we bounce that one off of our bond underwriters, and Anne Sherman, and see what they say? They, they have the benefit of lots of experience of using the key phrases and words, and that make or break an election like this. Something like that.
Andy, I was wondering, too, on the summary, estimated yearly property tax rate is anticipated to be $3 per thousand assessed value. I was wondering if we should break that down? So what are we now, 240?
In 2015, it'll be at 244, 246 per thousand, so the, the, this bond would equate to about 56 cents per thousand.
I was wondering if we should make that more specific? And it depends on what everybody else thinks, but put something in there about this bond will, you know, increase tax rates 56 cents per thousand, bringing the total up to $3. I mean, really breaking it down, and I was even wondering about putting something in there, you know, on a $200,000 house, this will amount to $15 per month, increasing your property taxes. Maybe that's too specific for, for this, I don't know.
Well, somebody, somebody could read into this, that we're adding, adding $3 to their income.
Yeah. My house, I just bought it for $200,000, and I'm gonna have to.
That's what I was wondering, is, you know, the $3 is the total, it's not just.
That's a good point.
They would say, well, I'm already paying 246, so I'm gonna be paying 5.
Yeah.
So, to break that down, and I don't know about the whole dollars per month thing, we can, we can do that in a more informational way, as we get, as we go through the costs.
Yes, I, I agree, that, that will be part of the literature that we make available to the entire community.
But I think it's important to say that this is all the cost to people, you know, 45, 46 cents.
We are certainly limited from the workshop that I attended over the weekend, we're certainly limited to vagaries in, in the estimated amount that we expect this to cause the, the voters in the community. I mean, we can't say it's going to be 25 cents per thousand, or 3.25 per thousand, simply because we don't really know how much the, the bonds are gonna go for, and what rate, and then as those things start to change, obviously, every, you know, we have new tax lots being built, and, and all of that stuff, that assessment gets charged every year.
Yeah, yeah.
It should come, the rate should come down over time. We also, kind of going along those lines, I don't know how to address this, but we also heard after the last bond, that, we, we said that their taxes go down and went up, because it was because of other things. Do we need to address that here as well, or just leave it as is? Because we can't control everything. All we can control is that school districts.
Yeah, I, yeah, I.
It's a perception issue by people.
I agree, I, well, and, and some of it's perception, some of it's reality, your taxes did go up, but, but the rates went down.
Yeah.
I mean, they, bottom line, rates went down, that's what we said they'd do, and they went down. But that, you're right, we can't control the assessed value increases that the assessor's office places on, on our residences, that's their, their.
Yeah, I think that this, I mean, we've gotta be pretty careful what we put in this, like you said, because, I mean, we could also put in there that we give them back almost $800,000 from the last bond, and we don't want to put that in there, I mean, so, I think this looks good with the.
Yeah, we gotta be somewhat vague with this, but, you know, some of the more specifics could even be, I mean, one of us could put a thing in the voter's pamphlet, too, about, you know, with even a few more specifics, and we're about to, cost, things like that.
Yes, it's a good point, and each of you are, are allowed to place a voter's, or a statement in support, or even in opposition to the bond, if, if you felt appropriate, like it was appropriate to do so. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah. There, there's a cost to that, and that would be distinctly from you, that would not be from the school district, but people who use those routinely to clarify and to promote their point of view.
Do you know when the deadline for that is, approximately? To September, or is it?
Let me see, the, the, we have to submit by September 4th, and then arguments in favor of and opposed are like three weeks later, four weeks later.
Okay.
So late September.
Yeah, I think this reference in here to the $3 bond rate is really actually deceptive, because here we're talking about the specific bond, and then this is talking about a combined rate.
The total combined rate.
Yeah, so I, I.
Yeah, so I think that's, we've got to express that differently if we can.
Sure. We'll figure that out, and we'll send out the updated language to everyone.
Yeah, just leave the $3 out and say it's 26 cents. Yeah. But it'd be good to put the total number at the end, or make people think you're doing it. Just saying, it's good. Other comments off the, this is something we can take home and read for, you know, get people back to, and maybe, Andy, if you could give us a revised draft through email or something.
Sure.
Before our August session.
Absolutely.
Because we're planning on voting on this, our August, I don't even know what the date is.
August 11th.
August 11th, regular session. That's the plan, anyway.
That's the plan.
Other comments, questions?
So I don't hear any opposition to that, so with these revisions, we'll place this, approval of this resolution as an action item on the August 11th meeting. Okay.
Yeah. Move forward.
That's right.
Moving forward. So any other comments tonight, something we can look at, be sure to try to look at in the next week? Okay. So any other items anybody wants to talk about today? Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you.